Seven P M. And is a wonderful. Tuesday, September fifth, day after Labor Day. All right, so let me see, I think I have most of canceled, um, we have the whole console here. All right, so I'd like to call this, uh, meeting to order. Uh, Lucetic.
Here.
Jared Stoffes. I think that was a here from Jared.
Thank you, sorry.
And, um, there you go, I was gonna ask if everybody could meet themselves, Valerie.
I'm here.
Thank you, Valerie, Danielle. All right, we have full courtroom. Okay, Vice Mayor, can you please, uh, lead us, um, in the pledge of allegiance? Luke. You're on mute, Luke.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Perfect, thank you so much. So the meeting got called into order at seven oh one, uh, just for minute records, okay? All right, so we do, we will do a review of the agenda. Uh, in the meantime, Luke, can you go ahead and read item and, uh, subheading for each one, please?
Sure, one, call to order, two, review of the agenda, mayor and council will review the agenda, adding or deleting topics of interest. Three, mayor and council event announcements. Four, public comment. Um, the rules for public comment are listed on page four, if you wish to speak, please advise during the virtual meeting. Um, then we get to old business, five, vision zero task force recognition. We'll recognize the work that the task force did for the SS four A application. Six, discussion and vote on the youth scholarship award program calendar for twenty four, twenty five, Mayor Benitez will present the calendar for twenty four, twenty five. Under new business, seven, recognition, nation, recognition of PFC Cruz. And the six MRPD explorers who participated in the twenty twenty three National Public Safety Cadets Explorer Conference will recognize. PFC Cruz and the six MRPD explorers, Lieutenant Kayleen Martinez, Sergeant Luis Reyes, Sergeant Brian Gutierrez. Corporal Alyssa Santos, Corporal Jose Motens and Corporal Jose Reyes for representing the city at the twenty three. National Public Safety Cadets Explorer Conference in Gatlinburg, Tennessee. Eight, reappointment of Mr. Bob Vanderbilt, Miss Stephanie Schlussinger, an appointment of Miss Emily Byrd and. Miss Bethany Van Kampen Sarivia to the recreation committee. Will appoint the aforementioned to the recreation committee. Nine, presentation and discussion of the Wamata Rail Expansion Proposal. Councilmember Stosfolds will make a presentation on the Wamata Rail Expansion Proposal to us. Ten, discussion and vote on DNR Community, Community Parks and Playgrounds Program Grant Application. For Mount Rainier Elementary, Councilmember Woodall will discuss the grant application for the aforementioned grants. Eleven, presentation of minutes. Um, from April twenty eighth, twenty twenty through May, twenty twenty, June, twenty twenty, January twenty one. June twentieth, twenty twenty three, June twenty ninth, twenty twenty three, and July fifteenth, twenty twenty three. And twelve is adjournment.
Thank you, thank you so much for the edited version, Luke. You started really good and then you're like, started weeding it out. All right, perfect, thank you so much. All right, council, I need to, um. Thumbs up from you if you're ready to move to the agenda as presented, or if you need to make an edit, please let me know, raise your hand, or. Um, if we're good, I see Lucas thumbs up, Jared, we're good. Okay, Danielle, it's good, Valerie, I see your mic open, how can we help you, Valerie?
Yeah, may I just wanna, uh, note that Bethany was added, um, at the recre- as the recreation committee, um, appointment, um, earlier today, but it wasn't on the official agenda that went out, so that's an addition.
But perfect, thank you, she has submitted all the documents, correct? Correct. As long as, thank you so much, because we're trying to make sure that. Anybody that is appointed, and you guys will see that in the work session, um. They'll be presented to us and they have to submit documents to the city that includes resume, uh, and all their information to, um. So that way the city is the host, um, of this documents and information. So thank you so much, Valerie, okay? And thank you to the whole rec committee, um, and, you know, for. Pulling through, creating a team and, um, thank you to both co-chairs, and I'm excited to, uh, point and reappoint everybody, uh, tonight. And I think the rest of us are as well, all right, perfect, so that addition had was added to the agenda, any objections? Seeing none, uh, we're gonna move and proceed as, um, as stated, uh, with the addition, okay? All right, we're gonna move on to item number three, mayor and custom bar events and announcement. Valerie, since you had your mic open, can you go first?
Sure, um, yeah, thank you, um, September thirteenth is the next recreation committee meeting, since we're talking about various, um, committees and things. Um, the recreation is putting together a holiday fun run, um. Currently potentially scheduled for December second, so just keep that on your radars, um, and then I think the only other thing is there's a PTO. Um, meeting on Thursday for Mount Rainier Elementary School on, I think it's six o'clock. Um, and the last thing is that we have a home repair program that the city is about to announce soon, um, which is exciting, so, um, that's, those are my announcements for now, thank you.
Um, and one more, can you talk about the chalk, um. Vision that you worked on, and I know a lot of people contribute and helped out, thank you for leading those efforts as well.
Yep, um, so the, um, there's the Neighborhood Design Center has a project called, or a program for art in the right of way. Um, and so the city had applied for a grant, um, to, um, Bloomberg Asphalt Arts to potentially put. Art, uh, between thirty third, on Bunker Hill, between thirty third and thirty fourth street to help kind of slow traffic, it's. It's a way to kind of call attention to a place, um, it, it brings, um, a sense of place to the community that's, you know, it's already there, so it's just a matter of, um, kind of. Furthering that effort along to have safer streets for all, um, and to make certain areas in, in Mount Rainier, um, more safe and sustainable.
Perfect, thank you so much, and thank you for moving those efforts along, it was definitely a great time for the whole community to be there. All right, perfect, uh, Luke, go ahead.
Um, no events for me, thank you.
Has the native planet we're going.
Uh, we have a, a green team meeting to, to kind of discuss things, um, and get, uh, getting, uh, getting an announcement out, but we've gotta wait to have our next green meeting before. I can, I can say anything.
Perfect, thank you so much, and I've seen a lot of like gray signs through the community, so that's always, uh, good to see. And it's good to, uh, talk to the people about it, they're, they're very interesting about what the efforts are and what exactly really is. All right, perfect, Jared.
Sorry about that, um, no events, thank you.
All right, perfect, thank you, Jared, Danielle.
Um, yes, um, I had two announcements, um, um, first is the, uh, first garden club meeting. Um, for Mount Rainier will be this Saturday, September ninth at eleven o'clock A M. At the food forest on thirty first street. We will have two members from the PG County Extension here to talk with us about garden clubs and starting a garden. Um, we will also discuss on where the members want to, um, have their future meetings and when. Also, and my other one is if you're interested in learning what you can do to help your neighbors out during any kind of emergency or disaster. Please consider coming to a cert meeting to find out ways you can help. The September cert meeting will be held on Monday, September twenty fifth at seven thirty P M. In the community room of the police department. More people know, the more you can do to help each other in times of need.
All right, thank you, and to clarify, the garden, uh, community garden that is not a city, um, sponsor event, um, so please be aware of that. As, uh, that information is there, Melissa, can you go ahead and pull me all the way, thank you so much, Melissa. All right, so, uh, Public Safety Night is September twenty second. From five to nine P M. In Mount Rainier Nature Center is one of our biggest events, we have, uh. Representation from the state, county municipalities, um. Fire Department, Sheriff, helicopters, it is the event to be on September twenty second. So come and join us this year, thank you to the whole Mount Rainier PD for putting this event together. The Latino Heritage Month Celebration is September twenty nine from nine to eight P M. In Bunker Hill Fire Station. This year, Brentwood and Marini are coming together to, um. Do the Latino Heritage Month Celebration, so it's gonna be an exciting and fun, and, um. The safety days have been gone out and we are collectively working. Bunker Hill Fire Station is, um, actually in between Mount Rainier and Brentwood, so that's what we thought would be a good place to. Share space that, uh, both of us, um, shared together. So the Washington Bridge Unit eighty fifth Anniversary Celebration in their twenty fifth year in being in the city of Mount Rainier. Is on September thirtieth. Um, please come and join, we're gonna be putting more, more information out so that we guys know times. Um, it is along eastern. All right, the city administration office will be closed on October nine, uh, due to Indigenous Peoples' Day. And the Halloween Parade and Truck or Tree will be October twenty eight, twenty twenty three. So, um, there's a lot of fun events coming along, and this is just the ones from October. Um, usually we have a very busy, um, schedule. November, December, we're gonna have the holiday, uh, baskets. Um, so we are gonna be working in collaboration with the PTOs, uh, Rainier Manor, uh, one and two. And a couple of the churches are also allies with us to make sure that we reach. All those residents that need the extra support during the holidays. Also, big thank you to everybody that has donated, um, and donated school supplies for the city. Um, also, big thank you to the F O P. For like giving away backpacks and our wonderful church in Bunker Hill, um. They gave hundreds of backpacks as well to our students. And it's great to see us continue to collaborate with the different, uh, faith leaders. So we look forward to having our next meeting in the Rain Manor one and two. And it's always exciting, uh, joining them in the various event. Um, so those are the event announcement on a personal note, I'm happy to say I'll be in San Luis this week. I'll be presenting on, among many things, organization, race civilization. Um, and it's exciting, you know, I won, I'm not only presenting, but also won a scholarship, so I get to fly over there and, um. And they take care of the tab, so we're excited to come together, the national collective. And looking forward to continue working and. Finding ways to highlight the great things Mount Rainier is doing, and also collaborating at a national level. And saying that, you know, um. I will be moving on to public comments, uh, can you put the last page, Melissa? Public comments is when the members of the public, um, could speak, you have three minutes to speak. Please say your name, last name, street and block number, for example, forty three block, four three hundred block of forty, uh, thirty fourth street. Um, there is a three minutes, uh, per speaker, otherwise agree upon the group, um, if you're representing a group, it could be up to five, but everybody in the group. Resents their time to talk, so you have to be somebody that's recognized by that group that could be able to speak that if not, we cannot, um. Grant you the courtesy. Uh, while you're speaking, there will be no attached store where's, um, members of the staff, if you have something to address regarding the staff, please address it with our city manager. Uh, city manager at Mount Rainier M D dot org, and we do ask everybody to be respectful, we'll go ahead and hear you, we might always answer. Because it's meant for us to hear and we'll usually get back to you. All right, other than that, I think I cover on it, and we please ask that if there's something in the agenda, if you could wait to speak on the agenda, please hold on and wait to speak on the agenda. If it's not, speak on it right now, if you have to leave early, you're welcome to do it here. If you're on the phone, uh, just alert me that you're on the phone and you wanna say something, we'll go ahead and call upon you if you happen to be online. Uh, type your, um, name, last name, block and street number so that we could call upon you. In order for us to be able to, um, for me to be able to know that you would like to speak. And if you're on Facebook, put your comment and our team will alert, um, alert me that there's a comment to be made. All right, cool, is there any member of the public that wishes to speak? Please, um, let me know. All right, is there anything on Facebook? All right, and I don't see nothing in the chat, we're gonna move on to the next item. Um, so just as a point of information, uh, PFC Cruz. You guys are, um, not deciding about the following item, okay, we do have our explorers waiting on. On hold, if you're on camera, you could see, you could see the little ones there, I just wanna make sure we are, uh, thank you, uh, PFC Cruz. We are aware because they do train on Tuesdays, so I wanna make sure that, um. We don't take too much time from them, so you guys are after this point, okay, Cruz? Good? All right, thank you. Um, so vision ta- uh, vision zero task for recognition, mayor council recognized those that work in the vision task force. That did the work for the S S for all application, so you guys recall, we did a resolution where various members of the, the community. Um, and staff members from the city got called upon to be able to help. But for the save streets for all. Application. Um, and they did a lot of work until we managed to submit an application. So Melissa, do you have a list in front of me that I could put on, so I wanted to at least acknowledge who they are? We are still in waiting in process to, um, answer. Into clarified one thing, some of us from elected office worked on it, but we worked in two different groups. To make sure that all times like no, um. No violation of open meeting was, um, was addressed, okay, so, um. The vision task force reminder was, um, Alexandra Crossner, uh, Gay Poppen, uh, Matt Burner. Uh, let me skip myself, Vice Mayor, uh, Lucetic, Consonberg, Jared. City Manager Karush Kamali, who worked with the whole staff and guiding them to make sure we followed through and everything we needed as well. The grand writer, uh, grand writer Bill Strickly. Our public works directors, Rosio La Torre, uh, Director of Co-compliance, Amma Ferofino, Chief. Uh, Lingwood Austin, PTO President for Mount Rainier Elementary, Tin Mayor, and PTO President for Thomas Stone Elementary, uh. Kamika Harris. Uh, Jared, Luke, did I miss anybody else from that list? And then I'm gonna think a couple of people that were outstanding, giving us very, very strong letters. Jerry, I see Luke said good, Jared, we're good on those names so far?
Yep, we're good, thank you.
Perfect, uh, the other thing is, like, like I mentioned, so Luke and, uh, Jared. Work on the part when it came to the meetings and application, Jared, myself work on going after, um. Letters and fine tuning anything that needed to be fine tuned at the end, uh, along with the rest of them, the team, right? Uh, but I wanna give a big, big thank you to Congressman, um, Ivy. Who, uh, wrote an outstanding letter of support for the city of Mount Rainier. Uh, the city of the town of Brentwood, Amir Rosio Tremio Lopez also wrote a beautiful letter. For us, both PTO presidents, um. Tin Mayor and Miss Kamika Harris as well. Um, and Jared, I always like get the name is the Bike Association. Can you, can you say it for me clearly, Jared?
Yeah, WABA, the, uh, Washington Area Bicycle Association also, uh, provided us a letter of support.
Thank you so much, and I would like to say that, um, we're waiting on it, we did. The team did everything and more that was asked, I know to design was heavily involved on it. Um, thank you, Mr. Kamali, for putting that information out and gathering the information, every resident that has come on and do it. Once we get the final results of what it looks like, um. We will notify you of like what the plan looks like, because depending how much money we get. That's what we're gonna tackle, um, and in the meantime, to design is also working. On finalizing the rest of the report that they not, um, that was aside, you know, beyond the application. Uh, because there's two things that we asked, enough information to be able to do a study for the application. And a toolbox, you know, for lack of better word for to design. To be able to give us the, the information that we need in order to be able to do the rest of the streets that need work in the city. There's always a plan A, plan B, obviously, we would like to take every single penny that they could give us. Um, in order to make sure that, um, we could get, continue working as hard as we can. So Luke, anything you wanna say, I'll see you the floor and Jared, go ahead.
Yeah, I would just like to appreciate, just, just thank everybody's work on this committee, um. This is a, a lot of effort, um, and especially to the residents, I know they had a lot of concerns to balance. Um, you know, we heard from a- almost every street, um, in the city about concerns about, we need something right away. Children are at risk, it was just, it wa- it was really enlightening to see sort of the same words heard everywhere in the city. And I think for these folks, um, especially the residents. Who came on board, you know, they had to figure out ways to not just priority, prioritize the street they were from, but the entire city. Um, and they really, um, took to heart the data that tool design was able to present. Um, on sort of where the people live that walk the most, where we have the most accidents. Um, and I just really appreciate everybody taking that data. Centric approach to such a big project like this, so we could help prioritize the needs of the city. And then staff, um, just really appreciate you all, you all are, are after hours, putting in work for the city. Um, on behalf of us, on behalf of all the residents, um, and that doesn't go unnoticed, and we just. Really appreciate everyone for putting in that time, so I just wanna say thank you to everyone, um, including our PTO folks, thanks.
Thank you, yeah, Mr. Kamali and his team were working through the weekend to make sure we got everything completed as well. So Jared, the, the floor is yours, and also wanna give it to Valerie, because she's been our, um. Ian Valerie have been working, uh, being, uh, PG's school representatives, um, liaisons for quite a bit of time. Even, even before she was in council, she, she was helping with the schools and, and helping us like, uh, you know, breach the gap, go ahead, Jared.
Yeah, no, I, I won't repeat everything Luke said, but just, you know, thanks to the community for stepping up for specific members for reaching out. Um, you know, that, that we're on the visions here are task force, you know, we had a, um. I, I was, you know, in the thirteen years since I moved here, I've been really, really happy to see kind of the, the anchoring point on culturally on. Pedestrian bicycle safety move to a point where we have almost. Really almost unanimous, uh, yeah, a desire for, um. Uh, for safer streets, uh, safer, um, pedestrian facilities, safer bicycle facilities. Slowing traffic down, that was not the case when I moved to the city. Um, in twenty ten, and I'm really, really glad to see the, the, um. Baseline, baseline on this move, um. You know, I, I'm, we're also very lucky to, uh. Have kind of had a national political moment, which opened up a funding pool that would actually enable us to. Uh, you know, to meet, to meet the needs of the city that we otherwise would not be able to meet, so. Uh, the safe streets for all grant program for anyone, just getting on right now is a federal grant program where we put in for this year. Uh, I think with a very competitive application, and we're all crossing our fingers to find out in a couple of months. Um, but just wanna thank, you know, everyone that participated, um, the, everyone across the community, folks from the apartments. Uh, the schools, uh, PTOs that stepped up, um, with feedback and input. Uh, for, for a, a plan that really focuses on, you know, not just. Spots, one spot here, one spot there, but really across the entire city. Um, it really is a comprehensive plan that'll not push problems around, but make the whole city. Um, you know, the whole city, uh, safer when we implement projects, so thank you again to staff. Um, you know, Bill, Mr. Kamali in particular, because I know it was a huge lift, uh, getting this application across the line. Uh, and everyone else involved as well, thank you.
Um, Valerie, as, um. I wanna say P G C M, uh, P S F, but the reality is like you, me and you have been working on school stuff as, uh, liaisons for. Quite a bit, uh, a few words, uh, on behalf of, um, your push and the involvement heavily from both PTOs, and now you've been key on making sure that. Relationship continues to foster.
Yep, um, thank you, uh, uh, so yeah, so Walk Bike to School Day is October fourth, um, and. It's exciting to know that, um, Mount Rainier, the city of Mount Rainier has both of its schools, uh, local public schools that are signed up to walk. Um, bike and roll to school on October fourth, we were the first city in the state to have both. Schools signed up, and that's exciting to see, so I think the school communities are eager. And excited for safer streets as well, so I'm glad to see that this is all coming together and working together on these events, so thank you.
Perfect, thank you so much, and now I'm gonna give you the first, so if you wanna say something, I know you weren't, um, not part of the efforts, but. Every effort you could pull through does help, a big thank you also to Pamela Boosterster, a board member who has been. Very supportive and pushing, um, you know, and listens through every, uh, complaint or highlight that we give her. Very patiently, so we, we, big thank you Pamela, and she could not be here right now, um, because there is, um. A board education meeting going on right now, so please, parents, if you have kids in. P G C P S, make sure you submit your recommendations, um. They are taking them right now as we speak, but, uh, you could always like reach out to, uh, Pam and she'll, uh, carry the message, go ahead, Danielle.
Um, yes, uh, well, of course, I wasn't involved in any of this until after the fudge, but, um, I'm very excited to, uh. See, um, all the plans that are gonna come forth, I know that a lot of people in the community are excited as well, and, um. I'm thank everybody, um, who put effort into this, um, it's, it's gonna be exciting to see it, um, come to fruition.
All right, thank you, everyone, all right, so once we get the information back, um. We will be having this meeting once again, and hopefully we get to celebrate what, what the outcome is. But regardless, so where we're at, um, in it, hopefully is very outstanding news. It does take some village to continue working and putting this opportunities, I think some people don't realize that. We need a whole entire team working when we apply to things. Because if not, it does not happen, and our taxes, as even they are what they are. Do not fulfill everything the city has been able to be brought up, and. I'll tell you this, um, you know, me and Luke are the, the two senior members in the group, and. That's something that we've been working on for the last six years, Kamali was also part in the team back when he was, uh, uh, Public Works Director as well. When it came to, uh, chief as well, Rosie on her capacity now as well, right? When it came to also planning like every year how to tackle the problem, because most of the time people give us this big problem. And, and you know, it's, it's, it's very hard to figure a way to do it. So we've had a patient, and we've asked people for patients, just like we're asking right now. Because we started cutting and chopping at it to try to get the priorities to get us to where we're at. And that's that we were able to finish the first, um, five years of the tool design project. Aiming and budgeting and going after every penny and like, you know, add it until we got to where we are right now. So there's the same approach for thinking of doing of this program and the other programs as well. So we do ask for your patience, please know that the whole entire team, every single one of us is working very, very hard to make. This and your comments are not going unnoticed, uh, we work very hard, making sure that, um. There's equitable and the priorities are set there, and we make it happen year after year. Until we know, tripping at the problem until we get where we need to be. until we know chipping out the problem, until we get where we need to be. Okay? So thank you, team, for doing that. Um, you are working, um, once we go to bed, you definitely are working the extra hours. We appreciate you guys very much, right? Alright, so now moving on to the next item, uh, discussion, oh, sorry. Can, ooh, I am so sorry, uh, I'm sorry, Cruz. One more, we're gonna make this very easy. Discussion about a new scholarship award program calendar, Melissa, can you put it up? Every year, I basically bring you guys a calendar, so that way we, we give notice to the community that the scholarship will be coming out and what it looks like. And also, uh, to uh alert them, um, there is, Melissa takes very, um, very careful approach at continuing to email the schools over and over and over again, a couple of times through the year to make sure that they know the application is out, and we do have an outstanding scholarship committee, um, that does all the work. Um, Melissa gets in charge of like receiving the applications, appointing, um, the interviews and uh working whatever, with whatever the scholarship committee is. My job is just to show up to be in any support that is needed. And hold on to the secret question, uh, with your life. Only Melissa and Pink are the ones that know until we release it, and um and then from there on, like, you know, she does um all the great work. So in front of you, you have the schedule. December four to the A, we'll send the information out to the, the selected schools. Uh, post it on the city website and share all over social media. We do ask everybody that has their own private um accounts to also share it as well. Uh, May ten, all application packages are due, including the five hundred word essay. Um, by five PM to our clerk, if they cannot drop it off directly to um City Hall. Uh, Melissa also takes um online applications. She has been doing this uh previous to um right around COVID to make sure we accommodated the fact that people couldn't come here. Uh, no later than May thirty first, finalist parents and guardians are notified. And on June four, the finalist parents and guardians are invited to attend the American Council Legislative Session to receive the scholarship award, and usually that day before it, you know, we we do celebrate and acknowledge the great work that they done. This is our sixth year. So in front of you, you have um the calendar. Between um March fourteen and uh May thirty first, the committee uh meets. Um, depending how many applications we have and interviews every single complete applicant. Melissa, make sure that everything is turned in. Sometimes there's like a little, um, that's what we encourage these kids to turn it in before time, cuz if something's missing, uh, we let them know like, hey, there's something missing. Make sure you make it happen and bring it in. But uh so far, we've had great success with our scholarship committee, having uh kids applying to our PhDs, um, earning their masters, their BA's, uh, going on to get um outstanding works. Um, we had a five-year reunion uh this year. It was, it was great to see what they were doing and how much willing they are to help others, so we are gonna be bringing them. Um, and quarterly, I check in on them to make sure they need any support. Um, and as you guys recall, you guys let them know that if anything they need, they could come to us, and I basically connect them if they need anything. And thank you so much for the community for answering. I know in the past, we have put a call out for people to, um, in their specific fields to help with interviews, um, uh, specific fields, um, and they have come through, and we're very happy that we had a, we needed a forensic, um, pathologist, I believe, and several people in the city were willing to be interviewed by the scholarship recipient. So this message goes out also to any kid that we have in college or in high school in the city of Mount Rainier. If you need help, um, finding somebody in the field of your interest, reach out, we're happy to find a way to put you in contact uh with them. Okay, so council, any questions? Let me know. If not, I'll put a motion to vote on it, so we can move on to the other exciting thing, cuz those little explorers need to go work out and learn and do the wonderful things they've been doing. Alright, thumbs up if we're good. We're good, we're good, we're good. Luke, you're good? Good, alright. So uh, motion the floor to accept the scholarship calendar as presented.
They moved?
It's probably moved and second, any objections, abstentions? Hearing none, uh, this calendar has been approved, so this calendar is gonna go on our website. So that will bring awareness to um the community that the application, um, this is what the calendar's gonna look like in the applications that's coming. Alright? Alright, thank you guys so much. Thank you, Melissa, for your great work. Alright, so item number seven, new business recognition to, uh, so Cruz, you didn't know this, but now you know. PFC Cruz and the six Mount Rainier uh Police Department Explorers post nineteen ten, who participated in the twenty twenty-three National Public Safety Cadet and Explorers Conference. The mayor and constable recognized PFC Cruz and the six MRPD explorers. So Cruz, I'm gonna call their names and they could come up. They have certificates that have been signed by uh chief and myself um, in behalf of the city and obviously the police department. Alright, so I'm gonna call to the front, let me see, Lieutenant Kailin Martinez. Is she there, Cruz? Yeah. We're clapping all the way over here. Cruz, uh, you have to uh remove the mute out of, out of your, out of your camera, so we could hear them, okay?
Wow.
We could hear you now.
Now?
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, so you're gonna have to go down a little bit, cuz we just see your hands. So, there you go. Where's Kailin? Lieutenant Kailin, and they do earn their ranks. Uh, they do work really hard to earn those ranks, as a matter of fact. So congratulations, Kailin. This is your certificate. Yay. Thank you. You guys go unmute yourself to clap, it's fine, so they could hear you guys. Alright, moving on to Sergeant Luis Reyes, uh Sergeant Reyes, is, is he there? Alright, let's clap for Sergeant Reyes. Yay. There you go. Uh, Sergeant Brian Gutierrez. They say, good job, Brian. Yeah. There you go. We're clapping for you, okay? Someone, so people don't unmute themselves. Alright, Corporal Elisa Santos. Okay, so we'll recognize her in the next meeting, okay? So hold on to her certificate, Cruz. Uh, deal will be to uh Corporal Jose Matens. Where are you, Corporal? Yay. Woo, thank you, guys. Alright, moving on to Corporal Jose Reyes. Perfect. Woo, Corporal Reyes, yes. Alright, perfect. And now, uh, we also sent a certificate for you, okay? Can you like open the certificate, Cruz? Alright, so PFC Cruz, former explorer when he was little, 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 right? Former uh parking enforcement, went to the police academy, success story, wonderful mentor. We wanted to make sure we acknowledge your great work, Cruz, for giving the children the opportunity and for guiding them and being a great role model. Don't be hiding, Cruz, I could see the tears over there. Um, being a great role model as well. So Cruz, a big clap and thank you to you as well, okay? Yay. So Cruz, do me a favor, turn on the mic and tell people what exactly was the twenty twenty-three National Public Safety Cadet and Explorer Conference that took place in Gay, uh, Gayling, Tennessee, Tennessee. Cruz, are you there?
I'm sorry, were you waiting for me?
Yes, can you tell us what the conference was about and what the, what the young, young kids learned, the young adults?
Yeah, yes, I can. Okay, so while in Gatlinburg, Tennessee, uh, the explorers performed in uh several police-based scenarios. Uh, they did traffic stops, they did officer rescue, they did unknown trouble. Uh, they also did uh the physical agility, police tests. Uh, two of them did the bicycle test. And uh, obviously, there's, there's uh the six of them right there, if you look real close, um, you'll see me taking the picture in the background.
Okay.
Uh, yes, they competed with over five hundred other explorers. If it's uh from twenty-three different states, if I remember correctly.
Alright, perfect. The other thing I will tell you, Delegate Fennell did recognize our young explorers as well as Chief and PFC Cruz at her event, and also uh the explorers helped out in common manner day. Um, they've been heavily involved, and they went to, uh, worse it that they went to the county, right, Cruz? To do extra training as well.
Yes.
So, uh, this, uh, young, um, young residents of the city of Mount Rainier have been heavily involved in taking training. If you have seen them, they have participated in multiple events of the city. Uh, several of them are trained in traffic control and so on. Um, they meet every Tuesday. Um, and you know, it started with a very small group. Thank you, Cruz, for making sure that you helped them grow and expand. Thank you, Chief, as well, because your leadership has been a big push to making sure that you stay involved. So Chief, I'm gonna open the mic so you could say a few words as well.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Uh, PFC Cruz, uh, we're so proud of you. Uh, also, PFC Cruz was recognized nationally, uh, for his uh work with our explorers program and how he at one point was an explorer, and he has come full circle to now representing our explorers in such a positive way as our leader. So we thank you so much, uh, PFC Cruz and your team, and we're so proud of all your explorers, and I just love to see you all come out for so many of our community events. I love your teamwork. I love your, your positive attitude and your, your wanting to be a part of something successful. So thank you all. And continue to support one another and continue to uh represent our city and yourselves in such a positive way. Thank you all.
Thank you, Chief, and if anybody wants to join them, they still have um openings. They do work hard, they have dedication and uh, a lot of heart. And so, um, they're being acknowledged and recognized uh statewide uh for their hard efforts and obviously uh nationwide by them being invited and be able to attend um to um the conference in Tennessee. So we look forward to a lot more uh wonderful things from you guys, and they are gonna be there for Public Safety Night. They are gonna be there for Latino Heritage Festival, so you get to see them, talk to them, and um they're a bunch of very smart kids, some of them a little bit shy at first, right? But they being like, you know, um, moving forward from being so shy and, and opening their, um, their, their little shelves. So thank you for, uh, Cruz, the whole entire team, Chief, uh, for making sure you guys are working with them on the ability to speak in public, uh, command leadership, uh, being responsible, having determination and having pride in who they are and where they're representing. We're very proud that they are Mount Rainier. So thank you guys so much for that, okay? And I know you guys have a busy schedule today, Tuesday, we don't wanna interfere. Alright, but thank you guys so much. I see a couple of my little friendly faces that I've known for ages, so bye, you guys, take care, okay? Bye. Thank you, Cruz. I know, they have to go back to training. There you go. Alright, bye. Don't cry, Cruz. Alright, perfect. Alright, moving on to the next item, reappointment of Mr. Bob Vanderbilt, co-chair, and Ms. Stephanie Singler, co-chair, um, of the Rec Committee, and appointment of Ms. Emily Burr, Ms. Bethany Van Kampen Saravia to the Recreation Committee. The American Council will reappoint Mr. Bob Vanderbilt, Ms. Stephanie, Ms. Stefan, Stephanie, I'm killing you last day, I am so sorry. Uh, Shell Sigur? Oops.
Slashing.
Alright, Valerie, you're gonna have to take on this one. Appointment of Ms. Emily Burr and Ms. Bethany Van Kampen Saravia to the Recreation Committee. So Valerie, I'm gonna see the floor uh to you if you wanna say some words, and uh we'll move on with the appointment, okay?
Um, yeah, thank you. I'll keep this short. Um, the Recreation Committee, um, we are supposed to have five people. We now have four after this, if we can vote on this, so that's good. Um, and so if you are interested in joining the Recreation Committee, I'm sorry, one other thing, um, so Emily Bird is actually on the line here. Um, I don't know if she's able to say hi, but she's on the line. She's the one um committee member that's here um for now, so um, she's here, um, and we are moving forward with getting the Recreation Committee moving again, so that's exciting. Um, but if you're interested in joining the Recreation Committee, um, you can go to MountRainierMD.org committee application and then apply that way. So I will leave it there and hopefully we could take a vote.
Perfect, thank you so much. And if you have any questions, obviously, um, Valerie is our council liaison, please reach out to her. She'll be happy to answer any question, of course, uh, Bob and Stephanie as well. So Emily, since we have you here and we love, love, love having people talking, uh, we'd like to say a few words, Emily.
Sure. Hi, my name is Emily Bird. Um, I live on Thirty First Street and have lived in Mount Rainier off and on for um, several years now. Um, and we are often attendees at a lot of community events. We have three kids. Um, I have a background in nonprofit fundraising and grant writing, so I'm excited to to join the Recreation Committee and, and dig into some of the fun events there.
Perfect, thank you so much, and thank you for volunteering. So now you have even more reasons to like show up to the meetings, aside from the three little ones, right?
Right, exactly.
So perfect, okay. Alright, so uh guys, we're gonna move up, I'm gonna put, um, I'm gonna make a motion to um approve the reappointment of Bob, Stephanie, and the appointment of Emily and Bethany. Um, can I get, so that is the motion on the floor. Can I have a second?
I'll start.
Alright, it's been probably moved and second, any discussion? Any objections, abstentions? Hearing none. Uh, the um, Bob, Stephanie have been reappointed to co-chairs, and Emily and Bethany have been appointment, but been appointed to the Rec Committee. So thank you guys so much for willingness to serve, and once again, MountRainierMD.org, if you guys wanna apply to any of our committees, please submit your applications of interest to the portal. We still have some committees uh that need uh more people. The Rec Committee needs at least one more to make the board, but anybody, um, any resident that's willing to work and wants to volunteer, it's happy to um to join through some hours, and youngsters, if you wanna do some volunteer hours, reach out to our team. We also have volunteer hours available for our events. Alright, perfect. So that was an unanimous vote. Moving on to the next one, item number nine, presentation discussion on Ramada Rail Expansion Proposal. Council members tough as to make a presentation that Ramada Rail Expansion Proposal to Mayor and Council. Jared, the floor, um, is yours. Give us an intro and what are the recommendations, um, when it comes to um expansion?
Thank you, and uh thanks, Melissa, for um pulling that up on the screen. Um, oops, let me, there we go. So, um, I'm gonna go over kind of a quick, quick presentation tonight, and um it's in response to um Wamata, which is better known in the region as Metro. Uh, their proposal, the study they just released, and recommendations they're taking, um, they're taking feedback and gonna make recommendations in the next month uh to the board, to their board on um rail expansion in this region. So, um, the reason we're talking about this is there's some of the um proposals that are wrapped into uh the, the package of options that we're talking, we're looking at here tonight are actually gonna involve new rail stations, new rail service uh near the city. So it's not, we're not just talking about, you know, more, more rail in general in the region, but um several of the options actually include uh new rail lines, new metro rail lines, uh, adjacent, adjacent to Mount Rainier. Um, so I'm gonna go through real quick, uh, just kinda talk about what's happening, what their study, what the, what, and um, and then talk about some of the feedback. So, um, this process, it's a, it's got started because of Metro. Um, if you're taking, if you're taking the system, and this is especially pre-COVID, um, it's very, it's very, very crowded, and in particular, if you're going into Virginia, it's um, there's a bottleneck because there's only one single tunnel at Roslyn, um, Virginia, where the blue, the orange, and now the silver line cross. So in the long-term Metro, um, as ridership uh continues to grow, um, you know, I know, now I know it's taking a downturn because of the pandemic, um, but it's come back around seventy-eight percent, and this plan is looking into the long, um, longer term, couple, couple decades out. And uh, Metro's looking at um basically building another rail line, uh, which includes a Potomac River Crossing. So a second Potomac River Crossing, a new capacity downtown. And then the question is, what happens to that line after it goes through downtown? So, uh, I'm gonna go through this real quick. uh I'm gonna go through this real quick. Um if you can go to the next slide, that'd be great. Alright, so yeah, just going over this uh three tracks between um Roslyn and and Stadium Armory. So there's three train, three massive train lines going through downtown, same set of tracks. Metro's uh knows they need more capacity and um is interested in building another downtown line. Alright, uh so part of the study was to look at blue, orange and silver line capacity uh and reliability and thinking about how to expand it. Uh they had four kinda overriding goals. Uh adding rail capacity, improving reliability and the on-time performance of the trains, uh promoting cost efficiency and uh basically a fourth goal around sustainability and equity. So they've looked at six potential, potential expansion options and this will probably make a little more sense when we get to the the maps. Um and this started in twenty nineteen. So in twenty nineteen, they did a series of surveys, open houses, uh generating more than five thousand comments, uh two hundred and seventy-five ideas for what new rail service through downtown, across Potomac and elsewhere in the region could look like. Um after two years of study, data analysis and feedback, Metro pulled to get Metro staff, pulled together six potential alternatives to present to the board. Uh if you're, if you're wondering why you haven't heard about this recently, it's because this process was moving forward during COVID. Uh and during COVID, they put a, they basically everything got halted, so they're picking up um where they left off in um basically twenty twenty. Um after all this like public outreach, um ideas and so forth. So there's uh six options, uh alternative. So the first one is just a baseline. What does it look like when you don't build anything? The second is adding rail and adding bus service. And the third, fourth, fifth and sixth involve a new rail line and then three out of the four of those involve new service um uh adjacent to Mount Rainier. So uh there's, we're gonna look at several of those proposals and um I'll talk through just kind of what that potentially means to the city and then finally what feedback we might wanna give. Uh alternative one, this is literally nothing changes. The region looks exactly like it does uh with in twenty forty, all no rail, no new rail service, um although the purple line should be running by then uh and nothing else. Alright, uh alternative two, uh they're just talking about adding um rapid bus, but not building any new rail, not doing anything else. Uh so that's basically a no change uh option as well. Okay, option three, uh this takes the blue line uh which currently goes, you know, down to Franklinia Springfield and as it comes through Roslyn, routes a whole new line through downtown, through the northern edge of downtown, uh basically connects through Union Station and then puts a bunch of stations in Ward Five, uh Union Market, Ivy City, uh Fort Lincoln right on our border, uh Port Towns, Hyattsville and then loops up and and uh is aligned with the uh Green Belt and the College Park stations. Alright, and if you look a little closer, you can see what that looks like on this uh on this map here. So again, entirely new uh blue line alignment through downtown. Uh basically connections to Union Station and then a bunch of the uh destinations along New York Avenue, Union Market, if you've been down there, Ivy City, lots of new residential, lots of new um retail, commercial, dining, Fort Lincoln, where the Costco, um Dick's Sporting Goods, all that new development is as well. And then uh two stations, Port Towns and Hyattsville, I'll go into those um and when we uh, when I get through this. Alternative four, this one actually doesn't touch Mount Rainier at all or even Prince George's, except the very, very southern end. It uh keeps the blue line uh going through downtown, but once it goes through Union Station, runs all the way south to Oxon Hill, uh National Harbor, then crosses the Woodrow Wilson Bid Alexander, basically making a loop. Uh so this one touches Prince George's just barely at the very, very southern edge. Um sorry, the very uh the southern edge touching DC, but otherwise uh doesn't really bring any rail, new rail service to Maryland. Alternative five, this is a Silver Line Express, so basically same comment, uh same idea, line through downtown. Uh and then service through Ivy City, um Union Station, Ivy City, Fort Lincoln, uh Port Towns and Hyattsville. The only difference between this and the earlier one, alternative three, is that it runs, the Silver Line is express from uh Roslyn uh all the way to Wheelie Falls Church. So if you're going to the airport, you get a little bit of a, you get a little bit of a faster ride. Yep, and that's what this looks like. So very similar to alternative three in terms of new service, um nearby Hyattsville, Port Towns and Fort Lincoln. Uh alternative six, uh service to New Carrollton, this keeps the downtown alignment same as before, but instead after Fort Lincoln, it doesn't curve up towards us, towards Hyattsville, uh well, towards Fort Lincoln. It does hit Port Towns, but doesn't hit Hyattsville uh and doesn't go to College Park or um Green Belt, but instead goes east to uh to Nick Carrollton with a stop in uh Landover Hills. Um so yep, and that's yeah. And uh yeah, okay. Next slide. So this is a little bit what it, just for your visibility, this is what it looks like tentatively right now. These routings are tentative, so that it's, we're looking at general corridors. We're not necessarily, these aren't necessarily the final alignments. Uh so it's not a guarantee that, you know, well, A, that any lines will get built, B, that these lines would get built near us and then C, that this is the alignment they would follow. Um so if you're, if you're looking at this, the um the black line is the one that's coming down. Um what uh what is uh the rail, the freight rail alignment, if you've ever been on in downtown Hyattsville and the rail rail lines right next to you or downtown Riverdale Park, that rail line, that's the rail line that they're proposing uh that a new metro rail line would follow. Uh so you can see one little black um box there uh almost near the top, that's a downtown Hyattsville. And then if you come further south, it basically peels off from that rail line to Port Towns. Uh and that's right at the intersection of four fifty and two oh one, Kennelworth Avenue and Blainsburg Road. And then the line would follow Blainsburg Road down. Uh where it crosses that dotted line, that's District of Columbia and then the next black box is uh Fort Lincoln. So um you know, there's the possibility right now of several lines, uh several of these proposals having lines near us, downtown Hyattsville, uh Port Towns and Fort Lincoln. Now again, it doesn't have to be on four fifty, doesn't necessarily have to be on freight rail line. These are general alignments and those stations don't necessarily have to be there either. Uh they could be elsewhere along that alignment. Um that alignment could go down, for example, Route One or could go down, uh you know, where the freight rail alignment is between um Cottage City and Brentwood and Ma- Mount Rainier. So you know, in general, you should look at this and think about general uh general corridors, not not specific station locations yet. Cause at the very high level, what Metro is asking the region to look at is look at these six proposals and tell us what you think of them. Alright. So again, here's uh, this is from Metro's. I, again, I didn't do this or these maps. These are even from Metro, the border ports. But this um just talks about the different proposals that would add new service uh adjacent, adjacent to us. So again, three of the six uh would add new service adjacent, uh at least on the current sort of sketched out routings to Mount Rainier. Alright, what's the timeline for feedback? So the reason we're talking about this now is that Metro is taking feedback from the communities and other stakeholders until September thirtieth. Uh at which point they'll collect the feedback and inform the boards, Womata Board's selection of what's called a locally preferred alternative. And that, that determines which approach, which line alignment for the region they're gonna take. And uh from there, they would start what's called uh NEPA, which is Environmental Review and Project Development. Uh start developing a project for the region uh and then start seeking funding. Now, in case you're really excited about this, um and I think some folks are possibly about new service, um rail lines take a really long time to build. Um typically ten, fifteen year window. So I mean, we're looking at twenty thirty-five, twenty forty, twenty thirty, sorry, twenty thirty-five or twenty forty. Uh no funding sources have been identified for it yet. Um but this will be getting a project agreed upon, so the region could move forward with a consensus on seeking funding from the states and DC, Maryland, Virginia and the federal government. And just a reminder, the Silver Line start to finish was roughly ten years, ten to fifteen years. Uh if you're watching this and you're curious about finding more information or you wanna provide feedback independently, if you go to Metro's website, uh you can look at all this data, all their studies. There's, you know, hundred pages of uh study information, materials. I've just tried to summarize it. Um you can submit feedback online, uh you can attend a public meeting. Uh there's, there were two that happened while council was, we were in recess unfortunately, but the last one, September twelfth, six thirty to eight PM at Metro, um Metro's headquarters in DC at three hundred Seventh Street Southwest from six thirty to eight. Um so you can go in person as well, but you know, also you can look online um uh and and provide feedback there. So the reason we're, we're talking about this, um and I I brought this up on the last Better Bus, when we talked about the bus network redesign. So there's lots of great ideas. There's lots, everyone wants, in general, everyone wants more transit service, more options of moving around in a sustainable manner. You know, transit is, provides equitable form of mobility for the region. It's really important, especially for working class uh low and moderate income residents that rely entirely on transit. So in general, I think as a city, um as residents, as community, we're supportive of more transit. Um but it's important to bring, it's important, it's important to uh provide feedback for a couple of reasons is um, you know, if we, if we don't speak up and say we're interested and we're supportive, uh then other places in the region are gonna say, hey, you know what? We want this in our community. Um you know, they'll hear voices that we're not providing. So it's, you know, like I said with the the um bus network redesign, it was really important for us to speak up and support a more service because especially as a mayor and council, we are speaking on behalf of our city, not just uh, not just individuals and all the folks that rely on transit. So I just wanted to kinda open this up for feedback to get the sense of the council. What I'd like to do is um provide a uh, you know, provide a la- uh ma- a letter for mayor and council to the Womata Board and staff just speaking in support. Um but I wanted to get feedback from the air and council uh before I bring, I bring that to uh the next board session. So um in general, yeah, so support for, just wanna hear your thoughts, support for more rail in general. Uh support for new rail stations in or adjacent to our community. I mean, it it's not unreasonable. I mean, it is possible when these alignments that, you know, could this run down the CSX right away, uh the freight rail right away, not four fifty, could it run down Route One? Um you know, these are all possibilities. Those alignments on four fifty aren't final yet. Um so you know, what do we think? And you know, what impacts could this have in Mount Rainier from construction, operational impacts? So you know, for anyone thinking about new service and, you know, a transit station on Rhode Island Avenue, remember that, you know, you're looking at a fifteen, twenty year window and a substantial footprint of, you know, substantial footprint potentially gone in our downtown uh for a potential rail station, if that's what we were talking about downtown, for instance. So um you know, it's just something to, just something to think about. I'm not trying to steer comments in any direction, but you know, service is important. Creating new transit service is important. A big rail system will have significant impacts in our downtown. And then finally, I think generally we'd have consensus on this, but I wanted to get the sense of mayor and council on all these points and then providing a a letter to the uh Metro Board and leadership. Uh and that is it.
Thank you Jared. Alright, so to clarify, you went through all the various options that were there and what impact, more or less, it will have. More, I think every single one of them does not come to Mariner, but it comes close enough where a residence uh could benefit in trying to get us to other locations, correct Jared? The short version of it?
That is correct, although if, you know, I mean, there, if you brought a line down from the east, you know, I mean, and you that someone got some idea about running it down Rhode Island instead, right? Like, you know, other communities, like for instance, Ward, folks on Ward Five, you know, Zachary Parker, et cetera, others could say, we want this coming down Rhode Island Avenue, not New York. You know, with that, is there potentially a scenario where it could come down Rhode Island instead? Uh that is possible. So you know, we're thinking very broadly in terms of of these six proposals. Do we wanna support ones that bring new transit service in or near our community? Yes. And then, you know, past that, what are, what is our feedback? So that, that's basically what I'm asking.
Alright, perfect. Alright, go ahead Danielle.
Um yes, thank you uh Mayor. Um Jared, thank you so much for bringing this to our attention. When I uh was looking through it today, I got excited when I saw the Silver Line um coming uh straight from Virginia all the way up into uh Greenville. I was like, woo, that would be awesome. Um I do support this um and and I'd like to do a letter of support. However, I don't like the idea of like, and you just said, um coming down Rhode Island Avenue or or US one, we don't have the, the, the real estate to, to, to give, you know, to, to Womata, to, to build this station. Like you said, I mean, even if they came in, you know, it would, it would severely impact um what we have there now. Um not to mention um the fact of uh that kind of construction, what it would do to our underground spring tables. So um I, I'm in support of it. Like if it goes down, like you were saying, New York or Blainsburg or you know, following the train, the existing train line, I'm all for it, but um I, I would have to um raise a yellow flag with uh trying to come um into or through uh Mount Rainier for those reasons. Other than that, I absolutely love the idea. Um yeah, so I'm, I'm in support of it except for that one uh, one point. Thank you.
Thank you Jared. Any feedback on that?
Um let me, yeah, I just, I, I think you're, yeah, so you are correct Danielle, like there, you know, if there was a station down in downtown Mount Rainier, which you know, cause I, I can hear folks thinking, oh, why would we wanna service in downtown? Well, you know, we can I think, you know, if there's a scenario where that is, that happens, it potentially takes a large parcel off uh out of our property tax rolls, right? In our very small commercial downtown and then basically sits at vacant for ten years, fifteen years. So you know, that, that is, it, it now depends on what you design a station. Like you can have a very small footprint for a station, right? With the underground one, if you've been to like Columbia Heights, you can see how small that station footprint is relative to the uh, you know, the relative to say like West Hyattsville, which is, you know, like several acres, mass, you know, several, but actually more than several acres uh in its, in its layout. But you, you are correct that there would be impacts um and uh and and not insignificant ones. But we gotta balance that with, of course, like, you know, the further a station is from the community, the harder it is to get to and the less the benefits accrue to the community itself, right? So think about like where Mount Rainier, West Hyattsville Station is on the edge of the city. It is accessible to everyone in the city, but is inconvenient for almost everyone to get to in the city. So.
Alright, perfect. Thank you Jared, uh Valerie and then Luke, go ahead.
Um yeah, thank you for bringing this um to us. I think it's um important for us to look at what the future will look like in terms of rail transit um and things like that. I think the um I mean, you know, if, if you're asking us to pick a plan, you know, that's one thing. I think just generally speaking that, you know, trans access is needed. I think that's important to, to call out and I'm definitely supportive of putting together a letter um and um and pushing for better access. Um I like, I like the blue line one and the silver line plans um that go through Hyattsville. I think that would be an interesting, it would be an interesting proposal. Um I could see that being a, a big economic boost for our area as well. So um so yeah, thank you. I think that's all I have to say.
Thank you Luke.
Sorry, let me call off mute here. Um yeah, you'd think that Jared was like uh a transportation expert or worked in the industry or something based off that proposal. Um or that presentation, I should say. Um no, appreciate the discussion. Um I don't think we would have had it, especially this early. Um Jared, if it wasn't for your leadership on this issue, um I love the maps of everything that comes through Ivy City, Fort Lincoln, especially over to Hyattsville. I think from, if I can zoom out, um that just makes a lot of sense considering the growth in Ivy City, considering the population um density that is in Hyattsville that they're, that they're building there um and would give us a little more access. We would still, we would still kinda be in that weird, weird area though, where we're like in between like many different metro stops, which maybe is okay. Um you know, that's been advantageous for me. I can get, you know, I, I don't mind getting on the, the bus down to Rhode Island Avenue Station. I find that pretty convenient. Um and I also don't mind walking to the green line if I gotta get down to Nats Park or um somewhere along the green line there. Um so I, I guess it would just put another, another metro stop to another line somewhere nearby if we had to go out to um Dulles. Um so So I would be supporter of, supportive of either of those options if you're looking for kind of consensus on a letter to the board. And I think my preference would be for the silver line, just because that would give us direct access to Dulles, which would be nice. But any of those that come up through Hyattsville, I think would be great for us. Thanks.
Thank you, Luke. I think that for me, it'd be good to like, talk to Hyattsville to see what they, they're aiming and what they're supporting. Because if we're aiming at supporting a station in Hyattsville, we need to find out where they're looking at putting it, because they might be like, you know what? We're tapped out with stations, we cannot give another like 10 years of our, you know, stations on it. So I think the next step would be like, you know, Jared, if you could take lead on it and reach out to some of our contacts. If not, I mean, you know quite a few of the people there, but also talk to the mayor, right? To figure out where they're, where they're at, when it comes to supporting one line over the other, based on the, on the location for them that, that it is. Because they might be facing the same concerns that we're facing when it comes to where to place it for accessibility wise, but at the same time, make sure they have the space to do it. So definitely supportive of it and let's figure out how we can like, talk to our colleagues on the other city to figure out what they're envisioning when, when it comes to the stops close to them. Go ahead, Jared.
Yep, and I, I did flag this for Brentwood Staff, College, sorry, not College Park, College City, Homer Manor, yeah, and Hyattsville, yeah. Because Metro did, I mean, quite frankly, did not do as good of a job on outreach as this, as they should have. So everyone is aware of it, I think most of them are talking about this week as they come out of recess. So my, my proposal for a letter is going to be to, you know, for the next work session is pulling together something that is basically speaks in support of more transit for the region, the importance of high capacity transit, the importance of investing in transit on the eastern side of the region, because we have such a jobs and housing miss, like so many, so much housing over here, so many low, moderate income folks on this side of the region and so many of the jobs are on the western side. So anything that improves mobility is really helpful. And Selena, I hear you loud and clear. And I feel very strongly about that too, is that it's never a great idea to say, we support transit, but we want the impacts in someone else's city. That's, that's not a good, I mean, it's the optimal solution if you're a, you know, for our city is to have it be in someone else's jurisdiction. But, you know, I, I, I don't, that's not, that's not a great decision to, to take. So I'd like to sketch it more broadly, like we, we are speaking in, in support of tra, of rail transit on this region, it writes, you know, regional inequities and housing and it helps, sorry, it helps write some of the regional inequities and housing and transportation access in the region. And we're very supportive of Metro Board and, and staff moving forward with pursuing this. You know, and also, you know, want to make sure that, you know, whatever pathway they take, you know, that we mitigate the impacts on, on vulnerable communities, you know, as, as part of the construction operation. So, you know, the first step is Metro, just Metro's board has to look at these six and pick one. And if they don't pick one that is near us, then the whole discussion doesn't matter about like, you know, where it goes. If it goes in DC or Wood Ridge or Hyattsville or College City, doesn't matter at all. So I think the most important thing is before the deadline, we just get a letter, say, hey, thanks for doing this, we support it, great for the region. Writes all these, you know, helps balance out some of these regional inequities. You know, and you have, you have, you're hearing our, our community loud and clear saying that we support this. So that's what I'm, what I would like to bring back before the mayor and council further work session with a letter next in two weeks.
I think it'd be good to put it together, Jared, bring it forward so that we got clarity, like, you know, touching the points that you have mentioned. And thank you for doing, your due diligence and reaching out to the other. I know me and you had talked about this before and we'll reach out to Hyattsville to figure out what they're envisioning as well, right? Because if not, I'll be called upon the core of PG CMA. And you know, I mean, I'm happy to be the vice president, but you know, like, I think there's something like that. It's like, I'm not sure if PG CMA is also looking into it, because it's like, it's encountered in several businesses and policies, including in the, in, you know, in the county. So that is something that we try to be supportive, because we could say like, we love it and great. And if Hyattsville say like, we'd rather have it in this station than the other. So maybe that could be like where the compromise also lies in, and partnering together between the cities and, and putting something out. All right, cool. So Jared, thank you so much. Work on the letter and we'll work on the diplomacy part of it. Yeah, I mean, you, you know exactly who to talk to as well. You've been, you've been around here for a while as well. All right, perfect. Is there anybody of the public that wishes to speak on this item? Please let us know. Jared, anything on Facebook? Jared, do we? All right, perfect. I do see, okay, I do see Ophelia on the chat, it says, so public comment already happened, Ophelia, like a good, about an hour and a half ago or something like that. You see a city post somewhere, a city will address it anyway. All right, so we'll take what you put here, because I, you did the, so we'll take what you put here, I'll fill it on it, because it's not addressing this subject, so I don't want to be out of order, right? You just said, doesn't need to be answered to, all right. So we'll go ahead and put something out. Melissa, can you copy and paste the comment? And then we could get our, our team to be able to answer this question, okay? All right, all right, thank you, Ophelia. Ophelia, I was surprised you weren't here at seven o'clock with us. What's going on? Too much partying? I'm disappointed, Ophelia. So you see being here at seven o'clock with us. All right, thank you, Ophelia, for bringing it up to our attention. Oh, you just got off work, okay. You're forgiven, Ophelia, we love you. All right, moving on to the next item. Discussion and vote on the Department of Natural Resources Committee Parks and Playgrounds Program Grant Application for the Mount Rainier Elementary School. Okay, Councilmember Wood, I will discuss the grant application for the Department of Natural Resources Committee Parks and Playgrounds Programs for Improvement of the Mount Rainier Elementary School Playground and take vote for mayor and council. So Valerie, the floor is yours.
Thank you.
It's A14.
Going quick. So, yeah, so the Department of Natural Resources has a Community Parks and Playgrounds Program Grant. And this provides funding assistance to cities throughout the state to restore existing parks and green space systems, create new parks and, you know, just to make playgrounds better. It's a competitive statewide grant and funding is tied to the state budget process. So the city is the only potential applicant for these types of funds. And so the city is putting in a grant application in the amount of $200,000 to revitalize the playground that's at the top of Mount Rainier Elementary School. So if you imagine the front and to the left, there's, there's a playground there. It's currently crumbling, there's asphalt, there's a heat island around there. It, it doesn't capture water well, so whenever it rains, the neighbors get flooded. And so this is just an area that could use investment. And so the city could apply, ask for $200,000 and then the school in the city, the, the school in the PTO can work through a finalizing a, a design for the, for the playground. And then if the city has awarded the funds and, and a memorandum of agreement between the school facilities team and the city would be completed so that then the city, the school could go with its contractors to, to, to do the design engineering and ultimate construction of a playground. So that's the gist of what it is. This is, it's a project that's in line with what the Neighborhood Design Center and the school PTO had put together in 2017 and 2018 in terms of revitalizing the outside of the school. And to make it better for the next generation of children, the playground is quite outdated and just needs a, a boost. And because the schools, it sits kind of in the middle area of, of the community, you see a lot of community members using the school playgrounds during the weekends, at nights and things like that. We want to continue to encourage that, being outside and being healthy in our community. So that's, that's the gist of it. I will stop there and see if anybody has questions or comments or anything like that.
All right, thank you so much Valerie for your efforts. I not mentioned it earlier. We have been working on being liaisons for the schools for a long time. I thank you for taking lead on this and making sure to find the resources to, to help. So I'm going to open it up to council unless council's ready to vote and move on, make it brief. It is A17, so let's make sure that we get our team out early. So I'm going to start with Jared.
No feedback. Thank you, Valerie.
Thank you, Jared, Luke.
No, this is great. I support it and thank you for taking the lead on this.
Thank you so much, Danielle.
Yes, thank you so much Valerie. We talked about this and of course I have to make an interjection on behalf of my neighbor across the street. Their, their back wall actually is the retainer wall for the playground itself. And like you said about the leaking, it's horrible, the leaks are terrible. And they really, really do want to see something done over there. However, they want to make sure, and I want to make sure that it's on the record that we really, really want to be careful about disturbing the spring tables underneath the ground there with heavy machinery and, and, and construction so that we don't worsen situations that they're already dealing with now. But other than that, I absolutely support this being this across the street for me. Thank you.
Okay. So thank you Valerie for bringing this. I think that some people tend to, tend to forget that this is a community school. And what is successful for us is to be able to work and unity. And I think this has worked for many, many years when it comes to us supporting them and then supporting us. Like we mentioned, both PTOs, including Mount Rainier PTO was very key in making sure they were proud of the task force, writing letters of supporting and advocating. And also advocating and pulling through when it comes to our green goals and initiatives. We couldn't do it without them and they couldn't do it without us. So I think it's a great way for us to look for resources. The other thing is like, this is something that they've been wanting to do, fix the upstairs playground. And that will allow for have a better playground for the kids, but also be able to manage some of the water storm management that is happening up there. So, so win-win situation for the city and for the school. And I look forward to continuing partnering and working along with them. It's not just a one person thing, it's definitely like a positive impact for the whole entire school. So at this moment, I'm going to make a motion, a motion to support the Department of Natural Resources Community Park and Crown Granting Program Grant Application for the Mount Rainier Elementary School with partnership with the city. There's a motion on the floor right now. Is there a second?
Second.
Has it probably moved a second, any discussion? Jared, anything on Facebook? And I see nothing on the chat, Jared with double T. Yeah, it was clear there was support. So I'm glad you put in the chat, but yeah, we did hear loud and clear that was supportive. All right, here in the, there's the discussion, any objections? Abstentions, hearing none, this item passes unanimously. So Valerie, thank you so much for your efforts on this and the whole entire team for making sure this application is going to be put out there. And to our great PTO for making every effort, Commissioner Kamali. Thank you for leading the team, all right? We keep very, very busy. All right, perfect. Now moving on to item number 11, Presentation of Minutes. Our city clerk and her team have been very, very busy. I want to make sure people do, are fully aware that when we say we're taking recess, not all of us are taking recess and definitely the staff is not taking recess. They're working very hard to make sure they get us to where we need to be for them when it comes to the regular year and wrapping up the last items. When it comes to the end of the fiscal year, so the job does not end for them at the end of June. It does not end for us. I think plenty of us have been busy running around between meetings for presentation and projects that we've been working, some of us for many years. So it's pretty cool. All right, so I'm going to read them through and we are going to be approving them as a block. All these minutes have been presented to mayor and council in previous occasion. This is now just the final vote to approve them, all right? April 28, 2020 Work Session, May 5, 2020 Legislative Meeting, May 13, 2020 Special Legislative Meeting and Budget Work Session, May 19, 2020 Special Legislative Meeting and Budget and Public Hearing, May 20, 2020 Emergency Meeting, May 26, 2020 Budget and Work Session, June 2, 2020 Continuation of Budget Work Session from May 26, 2020. June 2, 2020 Legislative Meeting, June 9, 2020 Budget Work Session, June 16, 2020 Work Session and Special Legislative Meeting, January 5, 2021 Legislative Meeting, January 26, 2021 Work Session, June 20, 2023 Work Session, June 29, 2023 Public Hearing and Special Legislative Meeting, June 15, 2023 Community Conversation. Intercession of 31st Street and Perry. All right, let me get a small, little tiny break, you guys. So Melissa, oh, sorry Melissa, so this is the, the round of Melissa said that we're not voting on it. This is the first time you, thank you Melissa, I know we saw it in like quite a bit. So you guys have the whole entire listing, review them, see them, and she's presenting them and they'll be up for vote in October. So, all right, Melissa, I almost, I almost passed them through voting. I was going to say vote for them and basically we have one week to like let her know. So there's the presentation, there is no vote, she just presented them. And if you have anything to add, change or include that you need to see on it, please submit it to the clerk for consideration and she'll put a notice out letting us know if there's been a change in the, in the, how do you call it? Minutes that she presented. If there's nothing to it, then there's nothing to it. We will approve them in our October meeting, correct Melissa? We're good? Thank you, Melissa. So thank you, Melissa and her whole entire team for working on this. They checked it once, they checked it twice, and so far we have had very accurate stuff on it. So thank you so much for this. All right, council, those minutes have been presented, there's nothing for us to do, just say, it's basically, thank you, Melissa, and if you have any changes or adjustments you need to make, send them to her, okay? Moving on to the next item, item number 12. Adjournment, can I have a motion to adjourn at 8:24 PM?
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been probably moved and second, any discussion? Objection, abstentions, hearing none. This meeting has come to an end at 8:24 PM. Thank you so much to our whole entire team and community members. It's been a very, very busy summer and we look forward to continue collaborating and working with you. Any questions, please reach out to any of us. All right, we'll take care and we'll see you guys soon. Bye, everyone.
Thank you.
Meeting of the fiscal year. All right, bye.
Bye.
Bye, everyone. Thank you.